The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March, I'm sorry, April 26, 2021 Westminster City Council meeting. Before we start the meeting, I wanted to bring you up to date on where we're at. As of April 12, Westminster City Council is meeting in person for city council meetings, with the option for virtual participation by council and staff as necessary. In-person public participation is not yet available. The community may participate by watching the live stream on the City YouTube channel or by dialing in by phone with the instructions on the meeting agenda webpage. We continue to support multiple opportunities for public comment, including email, voicemail, and live audio. Many modifications have been made to council chambers for the safety of council and staff. This includes spacing council on the dais and limiting the number of staff participating in person. When the public is invited back to City Hall for in-person public meetings, there will be limitations and new protocols to ensure the safety of participants and compliance with public health orders. Remote participation will continue to be available for the convenience of the community. The Agenda section of the City website is the best place to check for details on participating in council meetings. Website address is www.cityofwestminster.us/Agendas. At this time, I invite all of you on the phone, through the camera, and here on the dais to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Parker, would you take the roll call, please?
Mayor Atchison.
Here.
Councillor Damod.
Present.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Here.
Here.
Councillor Scully.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
Present.
And Councillor Vols.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. First item on the agenda of the night is consideration of the minutes of the April 12 meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consideration of those minutes. Councillor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the April 12, 2021 meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor, please signify by voice of yes or no. Yes, please.
Yes.
Any opposed? During non-motion, this period. First item on the agenda, on item four, I want to turn to Councillor Seymour for our proclamation regarding our Small Business Week. Councillor Seymour, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing Small Business Week. In 1963, the United States Small Business Administration began highlighting on a yearly basis the impact of outstanding entrepreneurs on small business owners and small business owners across the nation through National Small Business Week. In 2021, Small Business Week will be celebrated May 2 through May 8. Small businesses make up 97.6% of all Colorado businesses. Typically, a firm is considered a small business if it has 500 or less employees. Westminster defines a small business as a firm that employs 50 or less. Approximately 94% of all businesses in Westminster are considered small businesses. Westminster's small businesses reflect numerous industries, including retail, restaurants, services, and manufacturing. The city recognizes this week and the impact that COVID has had on those small businesses and the needed support from their government and residents to move forward to recovery. This evening, Juliette Ebdell, President and Chief Executive Officer of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, and Angela Atkins, Director of North Metro Small Business Development Center, will be listening virtually to accept the proclamation. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas Westminster economy is driven by small businesses who think big, take risks, and work hard; and whereas, from the storefront shops to the high-tech startups that keep Westminster on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy; and whereas, small business owners have energy and passion for what they do; and whereas, when we support small businesses, jobs are created and Westminster preserves our culture; and whereas, nearly 94% of our businesses are small businesses who create jobs and spur economic growth; and whereas, National Small Business Week has been recognized every year since 1963 to highlight programs and services available to entrepreneurs throughout the U.S., Small Business Administration and the government agencies; and whereas, small business is big business; and the City, the City's Department of Economic Development, and the City's Thriving Chamber, and our local Small Business Developments that are taking active role in advocacy, community development, and business development in Westminster; and whereas, small businesses have felt the impact and economic loss caused by COVID-19, now more than ever, small businesses need the continued support of their government, residents, to move forward to recovery. Whereas, the City of Westminster supports and joins the national effort to help small businesses do what they do best: grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now, therefore, I, Herb Atchison, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2 through May 8 as Small Business Week. Signed, this 26th day of April, 2021, Herb Atchison, Mayor."
Thank you, Councillor Seymour. Congratulations to all of our small business groups and to their representatives as well. Our next item on the agenda will be coming from Councillor Scully. She'll be recognizing our graduating senior. Scully, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is with great privilege that I get to do this proclamation tonight. COVID has been an especially tough time on our high schoolers, our kids of all levels, K through 12, and in college. And so, it's very hard for them to be marking these milestones in their lives virtually, and our hearts go out to them. Each year, seniors achieve a major academic milestone when they earn their diplomas and their certificates. The graduating seniors demonstrated perseverance, determination, and resiliency to earn their diplomas and certificates in ways beyond anything that any of us could ever imagine. Each graduate will become a future leader within the community, as well as the backbone of the 21st century workforce. It is important to recognize and celebrate these successes while looking ahead to the next academic and professional steps, and may they not be filled with COVID. The lighting of the City Hall and Westminster Station provides a unique opportunity for the city to celebrate with our graduating seniors. Now, I read the proclamation. "Whereas, the City Council of the City of Westminster believes our youth have achieved a major academic milestone; and whereas, these students have worked hard and demonstrated perseverance, determination, and resiliency to earn diplomas and certificates; and whereas, the City values its youth and desires to recognize the graduates for achieving their goals; and whereas, the City will light City Hall and Westminster Station from dusk till dawn in each school's colors throughout the month of May. And now, therefore, I, Herb Atchison, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby honor the graduating class of 2021. Brimfield High School, May 7; North Glenn High School, May 10; Legacy Ridge High School, May 11; Front Range Community College, May 12; Mountain Range, May 13; Bellevue Christian Schools, May 14; Avada High School, May 18; Holy Family, May 19; Pomona High School, May 20; Stanley Lake High School, May 21; Academy of Charter Schools, May 22; Westminster High School, May 23; Hidden Lake High School, May 26; Jefferson Academy, May 27; Flat Irons Academy, May 29. Signed, this day, this 26th day of April, 2021. Herb Atchison, Mayor."
Thank you, Councillor Scully. Moving on, the next item on the agenda will be public comment. I have, Ms. Parker, we have on my record two people who wish to speak live, via voicemails and emails that were already submitted with package.
That is correct.
For those on the line who are waiting to speak, remind you, you have a five-minute time limit. Once you start talking, I will time you, and I will let you know when you have one minute left. Ms. Parker, can we have our first person?
Certainly. Our first person is Tammy Reiki, and I will go ahead and unmute. Ms. Reiki, you may begin.
Thank you. Tonight is another three to four hours that you guys have dedicated to representing the citizens of Westminster. Thank you for giving your time and energy for the benefit of our citizens, and please let your family know that we are also grateful for their sacrifice. And I'd like to start with a short prayer, and then I want to comment on some items. Heavenly Father, you are the King of the world, and by the authority you've given me, I claim that you are the King of Westminster, Colorado. I intercede on behalf of the citizens of Westminster. Open our eyes to see you and your works clearly. Especially give our representatives, Mayor Atchison and Councillors Sights, Mr. Damont, Mr. Seymour, Mr. Vols, Ms. Scully, and Ms. Smith, wisdom and insight to see events and issues as you see them and to respond righteously. We give you all the glory forever and ever, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. I pray that you would all have wisdom. In this day and age, we have more information at our fingertips than most leaders have had in all of history combined. Yet there's a clear divide in this country on many issues as to what is wise and what is unwise. The Bible states that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. Last year, we saw our country taken over by a different fear, fear of COVID. If someone wasn't afraid of catching COVID, then they were pressured to be afraid of giving it to someone else. As the virus was new and not a lot was known, it must have seemed prudent to err on the side of caution. After all, life is precious. However, it is now over a year later, and there is still a lot of conflicting information. Hopefully, people are beginning to see that scientific studies are nebulous. Doctors have come out on opposite sides regarding health risks surrounding the virus, prevention, treatment, and vaccine. In addition to the contrary medical reports, there is also skepticism about the efficacy of the COVID test, as well as the number of people that have died. On a national scale, it seems impossible to know the validity of the numbers that are reported. Before you label me conspiracy theorist, please consider a couple of experiences I have had. Last August, I was in an emergency room at a Westminster hospital. I was there from about 8:00 p.m. to about 6:00 in the morning. The room I was in was right outside the nurse's station. Many times, I looked outside the room and watched as nurses and security staff entered the nurse's station and took off their masks, speaking together at less than six feet apart. I couldn't believe it. If I had to label anyone's place that should have 100% mask mandate, it would be the hospital, for people who have COVID either are or are likely to come. Why weren't the individuals working at the hospital concerned? And if they aren't concerned while working in a hot zone, why are we so concerned about so many other establishments? Also, last summer, I heard from an individual that works at a local nursing home who stated that many of the deaths at their facility were being attributed to COVID in order to collect additional funds from the federal government. I would like to see a study that shows how many people died from pneumonia and flu at our local nursing homes in 2020 compared to like the last five years. If the rate of flu and pneumonia deaths are decreasing, is it possible that COVID deaths are inflated? You all, as city representatives, along with the county, state, and federal personnel and representatives, have had to make some difficult decisions about a new virus with very little information. As a result, we, the people, lost our liberties. Liberties to make decisions about our own healthcare, education, business choices, and lifestyle choices for over a year. And I would request that the city analyze these decisions and consider making laws that protect our liberties, such as making it illegal for a business to require its employee to get vaccinated or require anyone, employee, or customer to show proof of vaccination. Thank you so much for your consideration, and have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, can we have the next person?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The next person to speak live is Jeremy Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, you may go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, this is Jeremy Rodriguez from Congressman Pearl Mutter's office, here to give you guys a brief update. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for having me. Like to thank your staff for accommodating me tonight and helping me get you to give this update to you guys, so thank you for that. There's a lot going on in D.C., and it's really busy, number one, with a lot of the bills that are in Congress, but also with committees that he's involved with. You know, this year, he is, or this Congress, he is, has a number of committees that he wasn't previously, and I shouldn't say a number, just a couple, but he's fairly new to the rules and organization of the House Committee, and he's been on the last Congress, but that was his first stint in that role, and now he's now part of the Select Committee on the Modernization of Congress. So, he's got a lot on his plate, and there's a number of bills in which he has co-sponsored and voted on, specifically the American Rescue Plan, American Jobs Act, H.R. 1, the For the People Act, and the George Floyd Justice in Policing Act. Regarding the American Rescue Plan and the American Jobs Act, these are focused on, you know, roads and other infrastructure projects, bringing in a lot of money into the state of Colorado for local government aid, COVID testing, rental and housing assistance, K through 12 schools, just a lot of money, and there's an estimated budget coming into Colorado of probably about close to $4 billion. So, hopefully, we can get that finalized and get that money to work here in the 7th congressional district. Further, you know, vaccinations are, of course, underway, and would love to talk to more people about those vaccinations that are continuing to happen here in the state and how the federal government continues to roll that out around the nation. Congressman Pearl Mutter has held a number of telephone town halls and office hours. In fact, he held office hours this afternoon, and will be holding another telephone town hall probably within the next couple of weeks. I hope people can check out social media and his webpage to see when the next one is and hopefully participate. Another part I wanted to share with you guys is our annual Congressional Art Competition. And so, that just happened, and we have a couple of students from Westminster High School who received some honors, so I'd like to share that with you. The top drawing went to Pamela Lopez-Ariola with Pyramid Within Women. That was the top drawing for that, and also Damian Scott with Extinction: A Crisis, which was the name of his piece. So, kudos to those two students at Westminster High. I believe this was the first time Westminster participated in the art show, so we're really happy about that, and hopefully, we'll have more students again next year. I invite constituents and residents of Westminster to give our office a call if you have any federal issues, questions, or concerns. We'd love to chat with you about those and perhaps get into the weeds about your questions and hopefully answer those as well. So, please feel free to give us the call. We are taking calls and setting up meetings, emails, and so forth, so don't hesitate to give us a shout if there's anything that you'd like to speak with us about. So, that is all I have for you today. If any of the council or the mayor has questions for me, happy to take those. Otherwise, thank you for the opportunity to chat with you guys again tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
If you can move to the recorded voicemails, please.
Hello, my name is Julie Hamout, and I am a resident of the City of Westminster. I would like to voice my concerns regarding the pricing of the water in the city. Residents are basically being priced out of being able to afford to live in the city because of the water bill. We are being forced to choose between medication, other bills, mortgages, just in order to pay our water bills, especially during summer months. I personally do live in newer communities in this city, and I made a request through one of the public meetings to have several representatives from the city come out and meet with me at my property to discuss possible changes that we could make to lessen the amount of grass that is required in this newer community. The people did come out and meet with me. Unfortunately, I don't have the names on me right now, but they all told me, no, I would not be allowed to take out the sod that is required in the pre-run area of this new community. That sod requires so much water, it is not even raining. And basically, it is all used as an area for people to take the dogs to go to the bathroom. So, it is a constant battle to keep it clean. I think it's absolutely unfair for the city to have such stringent landscaping requirements for not only the newer communities, but the older communities as well. If you would listen to the rain on what people are required to have, especially requiring these pre-run areas on the park between the sidewalk and the street, that's ridiculous. That is so wasteful. It is a waste of our natural resources, and it costs an arm and a leg. It's unfair to the residents in this city of Westminster. We are like your little pond. We're being used to pay and pay and pay and pay for lining the pockets of all of the city council members and the higher-ups within the city, and that's not fair. There are so many low-income areas within the city, these people cannot afford to pay their bills. I can barely afford to pay my bill. There are people in the community that I live in that have water bills that are $500 plus dollars a month from simply watering their lawn. That's unacceptable to me. You are chasing people out of the city, and it's not right. As soon as my husband and I can get our house on the market and get sold, we are leaving this city, and we will never come back. And we tell people all the time, don't buy a house in the City of Westminster, you will regret it. The City Council in the City of Westminster is not there for the benefit of the residents. The City Council in the City of Westminster is there for benefit themselves and to line their pockets and to line the pockets of the higher-ups, not for the residents. And it is so sad, and it is so heartbreaking. My husband and I have worked tirelessly our entire lives to be able to afford a new home, and we were so excited when we found our home in the City of Westminster, and we have regretted it every day since, and it is heartbreaking. So, shame on you for nickeling and buying the residents of your city to death and making them choose between food and medication just to pay their water bill. Look at the water bill, or the water rates of all of the surrounding cities. You should be ashamed of yourself for what you're doing. It is a disgrace to the city. It's a terrible strain on the name of the City of Westminster, and I will never, ever recommend to anyone to live in this city. I am so disappointed with it, and I cannot give out of here too much. Thank you for your time, and I hope a proper decision is made on behalf of the residents of the city, rather than your own pockets.
Hello, my name is Jerry Coyne. I am very concerned about the pillar of our property that is being proposed for sale to build 2,350, 50 living units. As I have written before, there is no sensible way the existing roads of Federal Lowell, 88th and 84th Avenue can handle this amount of traffic. Please, please, please consider the saving of farm and turning this area into open space, parks, and other recreational use. Westminster has a limited amount of land that's undeveloped, left. Once it's gone, it's gone. The City has funds for open space, and all of those who shop in Westminster continue to pay into this fund. Other proposed pieces of land that the developers posing could be used for housing, and those who purchase a home there would surely appreciate having the open space reserved. Please, please, please do not sell that farm for housing. Thank you.
Charles Nager, 5940 West 94th Place. Councillors, as you'll remember, about a month ago, I called with some serious concerns about the survey conducted by the National Research Council and Michelle Kobayashi. Well, lo and behold, an article has come out. Well, lo and behold, an article has come out in where your own Public Information Officer, Trevor Materazzo, acknowledges that the community survey fell well short of its intended goal. Did you know, counselors, because apparently none of you know what's going on in your own community, did you know that they offered a Spanish version of the survey? And did you know how many responses did we get? Zero, absolutely zero. I want to speak about a fatal shooting case that happened in Westminster in 2018 where Judge Raymond Moore recently issued an opinion regarding the city of Westminster. I want to read what Judge Moore wrote. "Plaintiff's allegations are sufficient to establish that given the frequency with which police officers in Westminster encounter individuals of diminished mental capacity, the need to implement appropriate training should have been obvious to the city." He went on to write, "Consider together the allegations underlying these incidents are sufficient to show an informal custom of allowing the city's officers to escalate situations involving people with diminished mental capacity by using force and a failure to train and supervise officers." That's not a liberal advocacy group, that's not somebody who has skin in the game, that's an impartial judge recognizing the immense problems within the Westminster Police Force, the fact that it has no oversight. We've got a chief who is too scared to meet with members of the public, return emails, meet with mayoral candidates, or do anything other than protect his own power. I want to address a comment made on social media by Counselor Demott, who stated that "The wolves have convinced the sheep that the sheepdog is dangerous. When the sheepdog is away, the wolves will feast." First of all, Counselor Demott, I'm not a sheep. I don't consider people who live in Westminster sheep. Apparently you do. But, you know, it dovetails perfectly with the, with our community's amazing thought leaders such as Counselor Smith, who said last year during a meeting that she believes that body cameras, and this is using her words, only show one side of the story. I think we know why Westminster has been so belligerent and had thus reticence toward body cameras. We have to have these state laws to mandate these things because we know the people in Westminster, the leaders, the so-called leaders of our community are always going to do the wrong thing, are always going to protect power, and are always going to abuse members of this community until they are held responsible. Now thankfully, we're getting rid of Herb this year. Hopefully, we're also getting rid of Don Tripp, too, and we really need to get, clean house, clean the command staff out, we need to get rid of Carlson, Baron Sheets, we need to get some new leadership in here from a different part of the country. I think everybody saw what happened up in Loveland with the 74-year-old woman getting her arm broken. And I don't think anybody, any of us would have ever seen that without the, without having a body camera. And just this morning, it came out that when an audio engineer has enhanced the body camera audio, when those three officers returned to the station, they were laughing about breaking that woman's arm. They said, "A little bloody, a little muddy, all in a day's work." Police officers are the problem with society, bad police officers are really the problem with society, and I'm sick and tired of them doing it in our name and on our dime. We know we can't trust people like Rich Seymour, David Demott, and Lindsey Smith to correct this. We need more people to stand up in this community to these domestic terrorists and let them know that they cannot continue to do this in our name and on our dime.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Pedersen. In my humble opinion, the question number five on your survey is worded as a false dilemma. Westminster rates are relatively high compared to other counties, including across the U.S. Therefore, with citizen input, community participation, transparency, and currently available financial resources, there should be ways to maintain and provide necessary updates to the current system without significant price increases. As a homeowner who uses a modest amount of water, I was absolutely shocked last summer to see my water bill soar following the installation of the new meters. I can understand the extreme shock and dismay many other Westminster residents experience seeing much higher water bills than my own, unable to afford this burden which was on par with their monthly mortgage in some cases. Will this happen again and was it an error stemming from the new meters or something else? On another level, I am concerned that those who support privatization for human capital markets impact investments for stakeholder capitalism will be driven by a long-term agenda that will put undue pressure on public water systems to include price hikes for human capital protocols which have built-in austerity targets. This economic, political, and social conversion is directly tied to sustainable development, excuse me, sustainable development goals permeating Westminster and Colorado project developments. This process is all-encompassing and involves public-private partnerships, taking over basic public services, education, healthcare, and prison police reform. These processes heavily feature continuous tracking and monitoring to measure and reward target goals. The first U.S. human capital market was Rikers Island in 2012. Governor Hickenlooper facilitated the transfer of Highway 36 for this privatization push. Currently, the pandemic is being used for political cover to rapidly expand human capital markets and the network requirements to support global implementation on a massive scale. I am well aware of the long history to include public water systems in this project, including a United Nations International Working Group meeting declaring water is a human, is not a right. Corporations like Nestle were very active in this sphere. See the classic 2002 book, Blue Bull, The Fight to Stop the Corporate Theft of the World's Water by Maug Barlow and Tony Clark. Barlow has since written additional books updating the process of deep capture, as the political science term applies. I urge your committee to recognize long-term forces at work trying to usurp truly sustainable public water systems that function ideally only when transparent and fully accountable to the local citizenry. We can all work together to protect and maintain our precious water systems, mindful of our collective responsibilities to make basic essential resources to life and quality of life affordable while also being good environmental stewards.
Hi, my name is Debbie Teeter. I live at 7996 Bradlin Boulevard, a Westminster resident, and I would like to call in about the survey that was released on your website, being given at the library, and also, as my understanding, I'm not one of them, phone calls have been made to households. This survey is very biased. It is designed to give you the answers that you want. I'm not sure the reason why, other than to support the decisions that you have on raising water rates. Question number five is a false dichotomy, and that means that you gave us two choices and ignored that there might be other choices that would apply to this question. The other issue with the survey is that it doesn't recognize how many times you fill it out or where your location is. This can be done by some IPS tracking. If you are collecting IPS information, by law, you are required to let us know. So as far as I can see, because you would not go against the law, you're not tracking that information. This will allow the user to go back and put in information, one, two, three, four, five, or how many times they would like to put that information in. This also allows these people to either do it on the negative side or the positive side. So I would like, if you could take this survey down, you could rewrite it, reformat it, so that you can actually get an honest opinion from the citizens of Westminster. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. That ends all of our public comments for tonight. Okay, thank you. All right, counsel, let's move on to the next items, the report of city officials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, Mayor Pro Tim. As your city manager this evening, I have a very short report for you on a couple of items. First of all, I want to thank folks that called in this evening by public comment. It's always appreciated. We try to explain to folks each, each week that we'll follow up with you, there were some very specific questions asked. One, which may be of general interest, and that is that folks with water bills that are of concern to them, they'd like to try to do something to their lawns that allow them to use less water and conserve water for future, the future of our system, which is a desire we have for the good of the water utility. There's ways that we can help you with that and we ask that you, you call our Public Works Utilities Department. I just want to reassure everybody that the money that's collected for water and sewer charges in our city by our charter and code go back to that water sewer and utility to pay for the infrastructure, to pay for the service that you receive. But I appreciate the inquiry and I do think there are ideas that we have that may be of help to people and we even have some grant programs available. A couple of programs I want to mention this evening. Thursday is Earth Day, the 22nd, last week, and Arbor Day is the April 30th. In celebration of Earth Day and Arbor Day, city staff organized its annual large-scale cleanup happening over the course of this last week of April. Formerly known as Community Pride Day, the Great Global Cleanup allows people of all ages across town to participate in a spring cleaning of our public outdoor spaces. 675 volunteers registered to clean up parks, open spaces, trails, and along streets. We very much appreciate absent being able to do the normal program that we provide, which is a lot of fun to get out with folks and, you know, we have a barbecue afterwards, but this is really terrific for me to hear that we had that many people agree to go out on their own. To adhere to best practices of public health, groups of volunteers were kept smaller than in previous years. Volunteers were asked to wear back masks and groups chose a time between April 22nd and 30th to do their cleanup to avoid crowding our already popular trail system. All Westminster residents who volunteered entered a raffle to win one of 10 trees that are donated by the city this year. Those who may have missed the sign-up for the Great Global Cleanup should keep an eye out for a fall trash cleanup called Honor the Land and Streams, which happens in November. Registration for that will open in September. I have some very terrific news tonight related to our finances. You know, we went into COVID-19, very fearful about what the impact could be on our city and, and we speculated early on, like many cities did, as to what those losses in revenue would be and the impact it may have on our services. On tonight's consent agenda is the monthly financial report, along with the COVID Chronicle. That was created by our finance team to report specifically on the impacts of COVID. It's the staff's, it is a special quarterly report on those impacts and that's also included in that item on the council agenda this evening. These reports include many data points and they're a little bit arduous to go through, but I would like to recognize the city is having done through our various departments a really incredible job of, of being resilient and being responsive to the decrease in revenues this past year. I can tell you this evening, the city is doing better than expected overall by quite a, by quite a stretch. I'd like to highlight that in our operating funds, the city has had positive cash flows for the first quarter of this year. So we've come back out of it, it's not over, but we are back to positive cash flows in this quarter. We're doing better than was expected overall. This is the result of moderate recovery, revenue recovery efforts, the great work of our business community to respond to this really difficult situation and find different ways to generate income, to serve our community through restaurants and other services. It's a consequence of an ongoing strategic hiring freeze we put into place within the first two weeks of this, of this issue. And of course, the continued spending constraints that you've challenged us to make during those past several months. In addition to these reports, we've included our financial accounting for 2020 and the city's external auditors are doing this annual work. Primarily, I can share some very good news with you related to that 2020 report. While the city had extraordinary costs due to the pandemic for various things that were not counted on, such as PPE, overtime, working in the business community to make additional contacts, and of course, all of the support that was provided to the business community and to folks that got rent assistance. Much of those costs were recovered through the CARES Act in FEMA, in fact, all of them. We can be further optimistic about the recently passed American Rescue Plan. Of course, we intend to work with you, counsel, to find the best way to use those resources. The city's revenues decreased significantly in 2020, but we were able to understand that quickly and reduce spending accordingly. Along with many sacrifices made by residents and our workforce, we funded our operations by utilizing some, but not all of our savings or carryover from 2019. In other words, we came out of 2019 with some carryover, around $9 million or so. That was able to help us balance our budget in 2020. Through the pandemic, the city has been able to preserve both its general reserve and its revenue stabilization reserve as of December 31st, 2020, and through the first quarter of 2021. So we are at the same place today that we were going into the pandemic with both, both of those reserves. And you know that we, we talked about whether we might have to spend those reserves down. We did all of this without having to lay anybody off, we did all of it without providing any furloughs to employees, and that was important because these are residents of our community who are part of our economy and they rely on these jobs. We were able to retool many of those people to do other work in our city. I'm so proud of our workforce for the work that they've done. I wanted to report that to you this evening and it's contained in that long report, but it's, but these are the highlights of that report. The last thing I'd like to say is that next week, we have an incredibly busy night. We have many, many, we've several executive sessions related to important subjects under your consideration and City Attorney Frankel has asked that I ask you this evening if you'd be willing to come early next week and do a couple of those executive sessions before our normal council starting time of 6:30. What we propose to you is next Monday evening, we start at 5:00. If 5:00 is not possible for you because of work commitments and that sort of thing, if you would please by the end of the day tomorrow, let me know how early you can start next Monday because we, we do have several things that need to be discussed next Monday evening. Again, Mayor, thanks very much, the opportunity I have every week to speak on behalf of the organization. I thank our community for participating in, in our public comment period and councilmembers, I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. I'm going to turn to the council next for their comments, but just before I do, I wanted to, in case Jeremy's still around, I wanted to recognize Congressman Pearl Mutter. I received a phone call from him on Friday afternoon. Many of the programs that Congress is issuing is going to allow our new infrastructure-type projects, but each congressional member, both from the House and the Senate, has been given an allocation of $20 million that they can earmark for projects within their district. I received a call on Friday from Congressman Pearl Mutter that one of our projects has been earmarked for his submission, along with one in Arvada and one in Wheat Ridge. Our project is the one in 120th and Federal, but that one is earmarked, is now goes to be submitted to his group of wherever in Congress it's going to get submitted to. But I wanted to thank him for taking one of our projects and trying to move that forward, so I appreciate that. And to Mr. Tripp's point, and I saw this, a number of comments this morning on the broadcast that I had with the chamber, that we are continuing to see new businesses open here in Westminster, restaurants to other types of businesses, expansions in our retail market. And people have a sense of comfort in knowing that they're coming to a city that's progressive and supports business and especially our small business. So we want to thank the group there, I want to thank Juliette and the others in the chambers for promoting Westminster. Reminder, Small Business Week is upon us, and I'm not sure, but I'm thinking Restaurant Week is either still here or is about to happen. But in either case, go out to eat once in a while, spend it locally. Any member of council have any comments, Mayor Pro Tim?
I was incredibly busy last week, so Restaurant Week already arrived at the Sykes Household. We enjoyed a multitude of local restaurants and enjoyed supporting them, but really enjoyed their fairs as well. So I wanted to really quickly say thank you to everybody who called in, who emailed, who left voicemail messages. It's really great to have an active group of residents that are willing to share and advocate for what they believe in. We won't always agree. We won't always agree, but it is good to hear directly from you. I also wanted to just kind of go real quickly and talk about this last week. We did have quite a bit going on in the city. I had the North Area Transit Alliance meeting on Thursday, going through kind of transportation legislation that's going to be in front of the state legislature this year. There's a lot that's going on, and we need to pay attention to it. There is in particular, CDPHE is looking at a requirement of businesses to provide commuting plans for their employees. And I think we should probably be monitoring that as a city and as a region, because what I'm concerned is it may, and everyone knows that I am a big climate champion and concerned about emissions. But this potentially could have an unintended consequence of rewarding areas that have already had more transit and transportation dollar investment, and penalizing areas for economic investment that don't. And so we really need to make sure that there's geographic equity and social equity baked into whatever formula they come up with, because I don't want to see communities that have not had the benefit of economic investment and opportunity miss out yet again because we're rewarding areas that have already had that investment. So I just want us to keep our eyes peeled on that. I also want to say thank you to all of our small businesses and to our chambers for helping cultivate them. This was a hard year for business across the nation, and I'm so proud of how our chambers responded. The Westminster Chamber responded to make sure people knew what they needed to do, what their opportunities were, and their partnership for the city. I want to say a special congratulations to the graduating seniors and for all the kids that have experienced milestones during this unusual year. Thank you so much for your resilience and your bravery facing unprecedented challenges. I really think that the youth faced a brunt of the pandemic. That is an adult I don't understand, and also taught us how to handle things with grace. I want to say thank you to the volunteers who worked on the Great Global Cleanup. One of the things Westminster really benefits from are community members that are willing to pull up their sleeves and work hard for the benefit of the community. I want to say thank you to the city staff. I really appreciated that update from City Manager Tripp. It's really remarkable how well the city fared. It was definitely a difficult time during the pandemic, and there was a lot of worry even on this council. What do we need to do? But we really were thoughtful, intentional, and wise in our investments and our decisions, and I'm proud of this last year of service to the community. I want to say thank you to the dedicated work and hours and thought and care of all the city officials and of my colleagues here on council. We did good work. Everyone, I enjoy going, I'm looking forward to the rest of the evening, and we'll turn over my time to someone else.
Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This week, I had the Jefferson County Economic Development Council meeting. It was really interesting. They always do an update on business, of course, and the community and projects that they're working on. They talk a little bit about legislative impact and bills that are being passed through the legislature and how they might impact our county. But the most interesting part of this week's meeting was that they talked about water. And you know, water is a very special issue here in Westminster. And so they talked about the deteriorating infrastructure of Dillon Reservoir and Groves Reservoir and the other pipelines coming down through the mountains, and how many of our sister communities will be experiencing increases in rates due to the need to update these infrastructures as well. So this is not just a Westminster problem, and I think that's what really came out to me, was this is a regional problem. It's actually probably a United States problem, but let's stick to regional because that's what we all know, and that we really have to focus on how are we going to improve our infrastructure systems and keep them maintained, upgraded, and improved as we begin to open back up after COVID. So these were important issues, and I really appreciated the discussion. And then on Friday, on the fourth Friday of every month, I attend a group called Jeff West Community Forum, and this week, we had our county representatives come and speak to us, and it was just a very enlightening time. They talked about a lot of different things. They talked about COVID. They talked about opening back up. They talked about vaccinations. They talked about partnering with the local residents. They talked about homelessness. So it was just a really great meeting. I would invite people to attend it. It is fairly early on Friday mornings, fourth Friday of the month, at 7:45, but I'm always happy to connect you. I too would like to acknowledge the seniors. I am a parent of a college freshman and a graduating college senior this year, and so I really know firsthand, watching my own children go through the challenges of a pandemic at times that should have been just inspiring in their lives. These should have been the best days of their lives, and I have to be really honest, I don't think they necessarily lived up to that level. But they made it, and I think that's what our seniors and all of our kids really need to remember is they have survived this. And I can't imagine how incredible their lives are going to be after surviving a 100-year pandemic. And I hope I get to see most of it, because I just imagine they're going to really change our world, and they're going to rock it. And I'm just terribly impressed with them and proud to know the ones that I do. And I too would like to acknowledge our city staff. City Manager Tripp commented that we did not lay off one person in this pandemic, and I think that is a huge accomplishment, that we were able to keep all of our employees working, helping our community, and being just good citizens. And I'm terribly proud of that accomplishment. So thank you, City Manager Tripp, and thank you to all of our city staff who have worked so hard during COVID. This has not been an easy year for any of us, but we are coming through it. As someone who just had her second shot, we are coming through it. So see you all on the other side.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I too want to pile on is the discussion about Small Business Week and Restaurant Week, and many times in our house, every week is Restaurant Week. So I'm grateful for that opportunity. But the restaurants have really proved to be resilient, and I want to thank also our city staff on how interdepartment groups came together to allow for outside dining, expanded spaces, expanded liquor licensing, and then inspections on those so that they were safe. So I appreciate all that hard work on the streets, as I'm sure our businesses do. This week, I have the honor of being the liaison for special permits and licensing, and that also gives hope, because that agenda is starting to fill up quickly with businesses that want to come here and do business in Westminster. Now, not every business has to go through that licensing board. It generally deals with liquor licensing, but we saw some, a couple more businesses wanting to do business here. And then also, the fun part is special events that even the city has to apply to get those events approved, and we've got some great things that'll be coming out shortly that our Parks and Recs people have put together, so I look forward to that part. And then as you go out, a local business owner posted this this week, and I've run into this too, our family has, is that as you go out and you enjoy the time in the restaurants, give them a little grace. They're having a heck of a time getting supplies. So your favorite things may not be available, so you get to find something new that you like. They're having a hard time finding, and so think about that, and it will get better as we go through. So thank you very much.
Counselor Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank all of our residents who showed up for the Great Global Cleanup. It's a, that's a really great and worthwhile program that happens every year. Our Environmental Advisory Board members did all show up, and they brought friends and neighbors with them, so I want to thank them for that. And then I just want to take a moment, kind of of, I guess, personal privilege if I can. I just learned on Sunday morning that my Uncle Louis, we always called him Uncle Louie, had passed away. Now, it wasn't a shock. He was 93. He's my dad's older brother. But I just want to say, you know, I learned a lot from him, service. He spent most of his life in the Air Force, so he served our country for most of his life, his career. And through that, we learned service, our whole family. And you know, I've had the pleasure and the privilege of serving on this, serving this city and serving this council with all of you, and it's been the great honor of my life to serve in that way. So that example came from my Uncle Louie. The other thing was kindness. He was one of the kindest men I've ever met, very supportive, very kind, never said a bad word about anyone. And so I want to dedicate myself, with his passing, to being more kind and having a more kind city and treating each other with more kindness. So I think I want to rededicate myself to that. I plan to spread kindness as much as I can. I try to do that. I try to follow his example of being a kind person. He was a very honorable man. He said, "He served our nation, served in Japan and Korea in some tough situations on bases there." He, in the Air Force, he didn't fly the planes. He repaired and made the cameras that were in the planes that took pictures while the planes were, you know, in enemy territory. So I just wanted to say that, so thanks for allowing me that moment of personal privilege. Thank you.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Vols, for sharing that with us. I'm sorry to hear of your loss, and thank you for sharing your service with us. With that, first of all, thank you, everybody who called in. We always appreciate it. I want to read something that I don't think anybody here is a stranger to, but it's relevant to what I would like to share tonight. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or press, or the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government or redress of grievances." I think that in this last year, when a lot of us have foregone a lot of freedoms and liberties that we're used to, I think that that rings truer probably than it ever has in my life. And I looked it up specifically because this next week, in 1952, President Harry S Truman signed into law the National Day of Prayer. And so this next week, which I'm bringing it up now because we won't get to meet again and be able to share public comment before then, but May 6th, next Thursday, is going to be National Day of Prayer. I'm going to be joining a group of folks that I've had the honor to meet with since I've been elected at the Crossings Church on 104th, just east of Federal, and will spend time as Christians praying over our nation, our state, our city, our communities, our first responders, our military, and just exercising that freedom of our faith. Obviously, I welcome everybody to practice however they would see fit, or not practice at all, because that's the beauty of our country, that everybody gets to practice those freedoms or not practice those freedoms as they see fit. I think that that's super important for us to remember and really cherish the freedom that we have after this last year of us having to make some personal sacrifices. With that being said, the other thing I'd like to share is I had the honor and opportunity to visit all our roll calls and see our officers face-to-face after a long last 14 months. I was joined by Counselor Smith and Counselor Scully, various different ones, and I believe both of them did the same thing that I did, and visited every single team that we have. And it was really an honor to be able to look them in the face and thank them for what they do. If you look at the city survey of this city, we like our police here. We enjoy them. We think they do a great job. They always score very high on our city survey, and I wanted to take the opportunity to thank them for what they do. I know they and the fire department, and I, you know, generally thank all the staff, but I think that they were ones who had to stay out during the pandemic. They had to put themselves at risk where others were able to, you know, be a little bit more careful, and so I really think that they deserve some appreciation. It's been a rough year, a lot of civil unrest, a lot of questioning about policing, but I just wanted them to remind them what the community thinks of them here in Westminster, and thank them, because I've had a lot of calls from people in the last couple of months wanting to make sure that they know how much they're appreciated. So that was a great honor, and if you're a first responder listening, thank you, whether you work in this city or a different one. We truly appreciate your service.
May, make sure there's Lontine, the 21.
No, I'd like to go back if we could, Mayor. I understand that Chief Judge Lontine has some information he wanted to share also with council tonight. I knew that was coming up. I wasn't aware that was going to be available tonight, and I'd like to call Jason Lontine, your chief municipal judge, on this evening to provide an update on the court. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. As part of the good works stories, I was set for today to tell you a little bit about our court's RASP program, and specifically the probation department's RASP program and the good work that they're doing. RASP stands for the Rehabilitation Assistance and Support Program. And RASP was really developed to improve outcomes and promote community safety by providing voucher assistance to individuals who have been sentenced to probation in our court and who are also motivated to engage in treatment to better themselves and address underlying issues, but are unable, for various reasons, to meet the financial costs of that treatment. As of 2021, our probation department has connected with over 30 local treatment providers who now accept RASP vouchers and provide mental health, substance abuse, and domestic violence evaluations and treatment to our probationers in the community. Because 2020 was the first full year of the program, we're really just now starting to see the data coming out, and the numbers really reflect the dedication of our probation department and everything that they've put into this program and into the success of its participants. Just some of the data, as of the end of 2020, 39 individuals who were part of RASP have completed probation, and of those, 32 completed successfully, which is an 82% success rate, and that makes it nearly 18% higher than the state average for standard probation. One recent example was a defendant who was sentenced to probation after an alcohol-related incident. After she established compliance on probation, she lost her job as a restaurant server during COVID and struggled to keep up with her substance abuse treatment and monitored sobriety. However, she qualified for RASP and the voucher program, and by working closely with her probation officer, she was able to successfully complete her year-long probation sentence while engaging in substance abuse treatment and remaining sober. Now she is continuing to do well. She's gainfully employed, remaining clean, and raising her daughter in a healthy environment. Probation also regularly gets feedback and thanks from other RASP participants who are motivated to better themselves while on probation and who would otherwise struggle without the assistance of RASP. That's especially something we've seen here during COVID. RASP really exemplifies the good work that our probation officers do here every day and their dedication to holding individuals accountable while ensuring that these same individuals are well-equipped to go on and be law-abiding, safe members of our community after their sentences are complete. So we're really excited about the future of RASP and look forward to sharing more information as the program continues now into its second year. So thank you all again for the opportunity to share some of the good work being done by our probation officers down here at the municipal court. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. We appreciate it. I'm going to try to get one more question in. Members of council, you have the consent agenda. We did not get the opportunity to see if there was any that, anyone on council requests to be removed from the consent agenda before we go into that item. All right, I'll give you a minute if you need to. We've also had a request for a short bio. Ms. Parker, we're going to take a short recess until 8:10, about seven minutes. 8:10, we will return. We are now in recess. Just a reaction from a very small percentage. Just a reaction from a very small percentage. They've had nothing back. Just forgot. Catch back up on it real quick. All right, Ms. Parker, get us back on the, come on when you're ready. All right, just to confirm, we're back on the record and we'll move forward in just a minute. I apologize, I got something I need to get out on the public. We have a request to notify the general public that, from the Jersey County Public Health, that there are 700 vaccine appointments available on Wednesday at the National Regional Energy Lab. And this is a Pfizer vaccine. They're encouraging people to take those slots because they're such a short notice. But I had committed to them and I totally spaced it out a few minutes ago. So my apologies, but hopefully we can get the word out through. I did mention it this morning on the call with the chamber, and they've got the links out so you can go ahead and register. I'll get those to the city clerk before the night. Again, my apologies for missing that. Moving on to the consent agenda, Counselor Scully, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to adopt the consent agenda, items 8A through 8D.
Counselors Demott.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't get a roll call. So used to that one not having. Ms. Parker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. My pleasure. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seitz.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Thank you very much, counsel. Moving on to item nine, appointments and resignations. We have none tonight. Moving on to the next item, item 10A. This is Council Bill number 10. Counselor Vols.
All right. I think I accidentally left my, yeah, okay. I'll make a motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved to pass Counselors' Bill number 10 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute the amended and restated for-sale development agreement in substantially the same form as presented with downtown Westminster residences LLC for Block A-4 West, Block A-4 East, Block C-7, and a portion of Lot 2, Block A-1 in downtown Westminster.
And Counselor Scully.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Comment or questions from council on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, if you would, please. Counselor Bill number 10.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Counselor Seitz. Mayor Protem Seitz, excuse me.
It's okay, yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes. Moving on to the next item, this is Council Bill number 11. Counselor Scully, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to pass Counselors' Bill number 11 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Sanchez Range LLC for a food truck park located at West 70th Avenue and Grove Street in substantially the same form as presented.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
Motion and second. Comment or questions on Council Bill number 11? Mayor Protem, do you have a comment?
I did. I just wanted to say this is a really exciting opportunity in our historic Westminster area. And this came about through the amazing programming that we were able to do even during COVID with Babe Wall, having someone come to Westminster, get excited about the vibe there, and want to invest in it. Since I got on council seven years ago, there's been a lot of residents wanting to have more amenities in historic Westminster and around the TOD. And so this is a great opportunity to utilize a very constrained piece of city property for a very good purpose. So I'm looking forward to this, and I look forward to voting yes tonight.
Counselors, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few questions regarding this. It's great TOD space to be able to do programming such as this, but with it stationary, I do have a couple of questions as far as how we came to the terms on the rate as far as mobile versus having it stationary.
Mr. Tripp, would you like to defer that to someone responsible?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, would you like to put all your questions out there? I think they're probably all going to the same person, but, or would you like to handle one at a time? Whatever you'd like to do is fine.
Yeah, I just don't want to.
Okay, so let's, let's take them one at a time.
Okay.
That'll work. I do think Jenny Grafton probably is the best to handle this one, and it may be the rest of them. So I'm going to pass to her, council member, just go ahead with the rest of your questions with Jenny. And I think if not her, she can kick it back to me or other people on the staff that can answer your questions for you.
Thank you.
Certainly, Counselor Smith, would you like me to go ahead and answer that one? This is Jenny Grafton.
Yes, please answer.
Yes, certainly. So this is, it is a ground lease of city-owned property, so we don't want to actually give up ownership of this parcel because it has, it has value from a long-term development perspective in being able to combine with other parcels. Therefore, building permanent structures on the site really are not in the city's best interest for the ability to maintain flexibility.
For, let's see, are we charging what market rate leases are for current establishments that are stationary?
Sure. So I'm going to actually let Chase Evans, who's our real estate and development administrator, speak to that in greater detail as he is the one who oversaw the negotiations with the proposed tenants and can speak to that in better detail.
Sure, thank you, Jenny. This is Chase Evans. I'd be happy to answer that question for you. So the, as this is a ground lease, there are actually not many ground leases to look at as far as comparable rents go. We did do some internal analyses to look at both the value of the land and sort of input a implied rent. After looking at that and considering the upfront investment that the tenant would have to make, we negotiated for several months to come to the terms that we came to here. It's worth noting that the city is not providing any sort of tenant finish or tenant allowance as would be customary for a traditional lease. All of the upfront investment for grading, fencing, other things of the such, all of the site improvements that are going into this are born, are being handled by the tenant as well as any future maintenance, such as snow removal, mowing, watering, irrigation, all of that is being absorbed by the tenant. So it's as much, the city is benefiting from both lease revenue, sales tax, and the avoidance of the maintenance, maintenance costs.
Okay, thank you. So that kind of leads me into my other question is, it looked like this phase one is going to bring electrical to the site. Is that part of Westminster's cost burden or the tenants?
The tenant is fully responsible for bringing the electrical to the site.
Okay, perfect. And then there is a call to, for the second phase, for a tap fee to be paid. Who would that be by?
The second phase is, I would say, I guess theoretical or proposed at this time. The city certainly is interested in a future phase where there could be some additional build-out. The details of that second phase are still in flux right now. The lease does clearly state that any costs associated with a phase two would be the responsibility of the tenant.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, it says that if there is a suitable option for actually purchasing this parcel, that there would be reasonable options for this food truck to be in a different location in Westminster, and have we thought about those backup options?
Yes, Counselor Smith, we have actually spoken with the tenants about that possibility. And there are several different options within the station area that could make suitable locations for them. And this is a scenario where we don't believe will happen in the next five years, but we're fully prepared if it does, and the lease contains language that protects both parties.
Great, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Tripp. Counselor Smith and Mayor and Council, I'd like to provide a little context of this that may be helpful for those that are listening. This is the transit-oriented development at historic Westminster that is south of 72nd Avenue. It's our Westminster train station. It's an area that the city and actually a whole number of partners, private and public both, have made a substantial investment into to get our trains, our first rail stop in Westminster to this location. The goal of the TOD and the investment that's been made to build a parking garage and build a major open space component and do it in a manner that drives economic development is to encourage people to put permanent businesses that would be leases of space to build permanent structures. That takes a while to do, particularly sometimes in an area that does not have that kind of service available today, and it has to be tested over time, and there has to be market built. The thing that was satisfying for me to hear about somebody approaching us about the idea of food trucks is that it could begin to establish that market and that if there is a demand because of a higher-than-predicted use that we're having in the, in the train station, that could, that could add to permanent structures being built at those normal lease rates that, you know, are with permanent structures. You know, I have for years heard, and I think it's a legitimate question from businesses that are, you know, buying and building, putting buildings up and they're paying rents about the competition of this kind of use. In Westminster, we'd hope that these kinds of uses would drive permanent investment in the city. But they are a very common sort of a bridge step, and they're available because of the sometimes unpredictable, ongoing, everyday use that may come in some other areas that have more buildup, people living there permanently, more jobs created. So the context of this is that this is an effort that is to bring attention to this area to help drive further development down the road. And I'm glad that you raised the questions, you did. Those were great, were great questions, Counselor, and, you know, we'll continue to speak with you as this moves ahead, if it is approved this evening, as to how this experiment of this kind of retail is working in the TOD. Thank you for the opportunity. Counselor Demott.
Mayor, I'm just curious with, with this, if there's any thought by the entrepreneurs who are doing this about that area and the homeless population. This is an outdoor facility, and so I'm just curious if there's going to be thought behind more enforcement need from law enforcement or police or anything around that realm because they know as that problem grows, this is typical kind of place where the homeless unfortunately need somewhere to go and this might assume be attractive. So is there any thought around that, how that plays into this plan?
Counselor Demott, this is, this is Jenny Grafton, and I don't know that I heard everything, so let me restate that back to you. Your question was specifically as far as concern relative to homeless population and increased security or safety patrols. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So certainly having vacant property is, is a challenge for us, and that is one of the reasons that activating this area is beneficial to overall security. Given its proximity to the Westminster Station parking garage, it already receives some additional visibility, which is, which is beneficial, but police are patrolling that area regularly for those reasons. That being said, I think it's also important to note that these tenants, these proposed tenants, are very interested in building community and having some outreach to the neighborhood. And so I think they see this as a holistic enterprise and want to make sure that they are engaging all of the people in the Westminster Station area and intend to be very welcoming and inclusive in their approach.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from council? Somewhat in line of what the city manager stated and Ms. Grafton both, with the future of Brinkman doing the rap there with the retail on the main floor, this may be a good shot to start to incentivize people to start looking at those spaces and coming in the future as permanent locations for leasing for restaurants or other amenities as they go through. We know we've had one that's been down there in touch with Brinkman already, and that's our hub, and we hope that they'll continue to look to that. Sooner or later, Ms. Grafton is going to come make a joyous announcement that Brinkman's ready to start construction, aren't you, Ms. Grafton? We hope, we hope, we hope.
Absolutely, Mayor.
No other questions? Ms. Parker, this is item 10B, Council Bill Number 11.
Mayor Pro Tem sites. Yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
And Counselor Demott.
Yes.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for Council Bill Number 11. Moving on to the next item, item C. Whoever makes this, and remember, this is a three-part, three-motion. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 6, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for a new lease for $2,209,616 with Zion's Bank Corporation, N.A., which includes $2,207,616 for the lease agreement and $2,000 for the lease escrow agreement.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments on item C1, Resolution Number 6. Seymour? No comment? Okay. Ms. Parker? Resolution, yeah, Resolution Number 6, if you would, please.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Moving on to the next item, that one passes on a 7-0. The other part of that one is Resolution Number 6. Counselor Seymour?
Uh, C2, correct, Mr. Mayor?
Correct, C2.
Moved to pass Counselors' Bill Number 12 regarding the supplemental appropriations of funds on first reading, appropriating a total of $2,209,616 in lease proceeds, with $900,070 appropriated to the general fund and $1,309,546 appropriated to the Legacy Ridge and Walnut Creek Preserve Golf Course Enterprise Fund.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Council Bill Number 12. Any comments or questions from council? Being none, Ms. Parker?
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Council, Council Bill Number 12 passes on a 7-0 vote. Moving to the final part of that, Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the purchase of 2021 parks and golf maintenance equipment with LL Johnson Distributing Company, Post to Stereo Brothers Equipment Company, Colorado Golf and Turf, and Frost Companies for a total of $2,207,616 with a 10% contingency for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $2,428,378.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item C3. Any comments or questions from council? Being none, Ms. Parker, if you would, item 10C3.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Thank you, council, but passes also on a 7-0 vote, and all the golfers and those who use the golf courses, irrigators, and everyone else involved with it, thank you very much. Moving on to item D1, council, this one also has a three-part piece. Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Integrity Golf, Inc. in the amount of $5,152,96 plus a 10% contingency of $515,210 contingent upon the approval of Counselor Bill 13, Resolution Number 7, and bond counsel for the replacement of the irrigation system at Legacy Ridge Golf Course and Walnut Creek Golf Preserve, and the restoration of the lake between holes number four and number seven at Legacy Ridge Golf Course. Total cost of the golf course irrigation and renovation project is not to exceed, I'm sorry,
Counselor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item D1. Any comments or questions from council? Mayor Pro Tem?
Believe it or not, I do still want to speak on this item. As you have seen from the item prior to this and the, the two items that we're about to vote on, we in Westminster invest quite a bit of money in our golf courses. We have benefited as a community that decided to have community-owned golf courses, opening up the, the traditionally country club, club sports to all residents. And this is one way, I think, that Westminster from its very beginning focused on equity. It allowed us to have executive housing, which then allowed us to help attract primary employers with high-paying jobs because we had places for their executives to live. Golfers enjoy it, and the summer I enjoyed going to a play on the grounds of the Legacy Ridge Golf Course. I would say I would like to see us find ways to activate the golf, golf courses from time to time, like we have with the spring hunt at Walnut Creek, like the play at Legacy Ridge, to folks who maybe don't golf, but are residents of the city and would like to enjoy those beautiful, beautiful grounds. You know, I, I was thinking things like maybe community constitutionals where people can, it can be open to residents to walk around, look at those vistas and enjoy, and perhaps get, get a bite to eat at the restaurants attached to them. So I would just encourage our staff who are listening tonight to look to ways to continue to use our golf courses as ways to encourage neighborhoods and community and equity. Thanks.
Counselor Demott?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share something as far as my vote. So initially, my thinking on this was coming out of COVID, you know, it wasn't like, that's a lot of money. However, with the strong report that we got from the city manager, which is welcome, that is part of why I'm going to vote yes. But the other thing that I would just like to point out to the public is the escalating costs in construction, and so this is going to have to happen one way or another. And if we have the money and the ability to do this, I think it's responsible to do it because I think it says 6.3 increase that we have due to the delay. I don't want to see another 6.3 increase of labor any further. So I will be voting yes and supporting this.
Just to, to bring folks up, the irrigation system proposed in this motion is the original system that was built two years before the course opened and is over 25 years old now. Parts in the irrigation control systems are now hand or custom-made because the product is not on the open market. You can't buy it even on some of the websites because it's just too old, technology is outdated. We've, in my discussions with Jason Jink and some of the staff, the maintenance staff there, they fully expect to see the water conservation return on this because the controllers are better, the equipment is better, and there's more technology up to date, and they don't have to have someone go to the golf course every time somebody says a sprinkler's going off. They can do it all from a remote location, where in the past, we've had to have somebody from the staff drive in from, it could be Longmont, Frederick, wherever they live. And in that time, that big system is spewing water all over the place. Now they'll be able to cut all that down from a remote location by computer. But also somewhat to the Mayor Pro Tem site, keep in mind, they have in the, in this last year, there were noticeable number of zombies that were found on the golf course stealing golf balls. Now, I don't know what they were doing with the golf balls, but they were there. But during the wintertime, before the course opens for play, pedestrians and walkers and bikers are welcome to use the pathways, which are already cleaned off and shovel for them by our, our golf course staff. But there is, as we talked about, a lot of amenities that go with our two golf courses. Both of our golf courses are in a 20-plus-year range, Legacy Ridge being the oldest of those two, opened up about four years before Walnut Creek. But this is the first time we have done this much of a major investment in the golf course since it opened, and we're long overdue, and I think the savings that we will see out of this will also help pave this back and provide us, provide us a higher quality of course. Keep in mind, this is one of the top-rated public golf courses in the entire state, and that goes to our staff, our golf professionals, the people who work in the clubhouses and restaurants. We continue, just today alone, over 200 tee times were held at golf courses. It's not even spring yet, but we are seeing a huge amount of play and use along golf courses. Any other comments or questions for item D1? Being none, Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
And Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Item D1 passes on a 7-0 vote. Let's see if we can get the rest of it. Mayor Pro Tem, item D2.
I'll do my best here. Move to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with LL Johnson Distributing Co. in the amount of $2,415,977 plus a 10% contingency of $241,597 contingent upon the approval of Counselors' Bill Number 13, Resolution Number 7, and bond counsel for the purchase of irrigation system components to be installed by Integrity Golf, Inc. as part of the golf course irrigation and renovation project. Total cost of the irrigation system components purchase is not to exceed $2,657,574.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on item D2. Are there comments from council? Being none, Ms. Parker?
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Also, that's one more part. Moving on to the third part, would you like to have somebody else read that for you, or you want to read? All right, let me read item D3. Moving on to item D3, we move to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Watertronic, Inc. in the amount of $842,134 plus a 10% contingency of $84,214 contingent upon the approval of Council Bill Number 13, Resolution Number 7, the bond counsel for the purchase of pump stations to be installed by Integrity Golf, Inc. as part of the golf course irrigation renovation project. Total cost of the pump station purchase is not to exceed $926,348. Counselor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item D3. Comments or questions from council? Being none, Ms. Parker?
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Moving on to the last part of this item, Council Bill Number 13. Counselor Smith?
I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 13 on first reading, authorizing the issuance of private placement certificates of participation in a principal amount not to exceed $6,700,000 for purposes of financing a portion of the golf course irrigation system's replacement.
Counselor Scully?
Yes, I, I have a nice second.
I have a motion and a second for Council Bill Number 13. Any comments or questions from council? Counselor Seymour?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to confirm that the way this is structured, the payment, the issuance of the certificates of participation really come into play so that the users of our course will, their, their fees will then pay for this back. Is that correct?
Mr. Tripp?
Thank you, Counselor Smith for your, or excuse me, Counselor Seymour for your question. Yeah, essentially, this is an enterprise fund, which requires that the cost of operating the enterprise fund is paid for via fees from the golfers themselves. There are some nuances to that, so I never like to say 100% or, or, I can say to you mostly, because there are some nuances to that, and I can bring the finance director on, or I can provide a report to you, but the golf courses were set up years ago to be self-sustaining. They weren't for some period of time, the last few years they have been, but in this capitalization of these kinds of improvements are factored into that. I would like to maybe ask the finance director, the CFO, to put together a little more of a detailed report for you, because I want to make sure you see the whole accurate picture, but I think for the purposes this evening, I can answer yes to your question.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. I appreciate that.
Other comments or questions from council on Council Bill 13? Being none, Ms. Parker?
Mayor Pro Tem sites. Yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
And Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Council Bill Number 13 also passes on a 7 vote. Move on to the next piece, the same item, council. This is Resolution Number 7. Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 7, permitting reimbursement for costs incurred from projects from the proceeds of private placement certificates of participation by the City of Westminster to fund the golf course irrigation system replacements.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of Resolution Number 7. Comments from council? Ms. Parker?
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Thank you, council. That item also passes on a 7-0 vote. Moving on to the next item from the bond portion of this, it's item 10G. Counselor Vols?
All right, I did it again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're on G, correct?
Yes.
A move to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for bond counsel services with Butler Snow LLP for fee not to exceed $45,000 in connection with the anticipated issuance of tax-exempt private placement certificates of participation, COPs, for the City of Westminster for the golf course irrigation system replacements project.
Counselor Demott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item 10G. Are there questions, comments from council? Mr. Tripp?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I want to follow up in having a chance to take a look at the, the documents in front of you. The item 10D summary provided to you under fiscal impact will, will show the various sources of funds that are used for this to pay back the certificates of participation, including, there are some funds from Stormwater Utility, Public Works and Utility Funds, and again, I can provide a breakdown as to how those, the differentiation of that comes together, how that, how that matches up to the enterprise fund. So just wanted to take, wanted to make sure you saw that that was part of your action previously in 10D.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments on item 10G? Ms. Parker?
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Thank you, council. I think that finally writes up all the golf course stuff for the night. Hopefully, Mr. Jink doesn't get back on the agenda anytime soon. Moving on to item 10H. Mayor Pro Tem, you want to try reading again, or you want to skip?
Uh, if someone else put it up.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the amended adequate assurances agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, doing business as the Mile High Flood District, to amend the maximum allowed stormwater release rate from Great Western Reservoir.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item 10H. Comments or questions from counsel? Mayor Pro Tem, you have a question?
I do. I had alerted city manager Tripp not very long before the meeting that I would just like staff to briefly go over this and explain this additional discharge, particularly as this is adjacent to the former Rocky Flat site. What does this mean? Oftentimes, anything that includes the name Rocky Flats can make people nervous, and so I just want to have you go over this change and how, if it has any impacts on health or safety, if they exist, what they are, and if they don't exist, kind of reassure our residents.
Do you have someone you want to start doing that?
We do. Melanie Walter wrote, excuse me, Melanie Walter wrote the supporting documents here for you this evening. I don't know if Ms. Walter wants to come on or her department director.
Just in case Melanie's not here, I can probably provide an answer to that. This action by counsel is actually an acknowledgement that there will be further development on the Rocky Flats site. You might have noticed, reading the agenda memo, that the calculation of runoff into Great Western was based on 1989 vintage information. At that time, it was still assumed that it was a possibility that the Rocky Flat site could be fully developed, thus yielding a very high runoff amount into Great Western and ultimately discharging into Walnut Creek, which flows through a portion of Westminster. With this action, I think all of the parties involved are acknowledging that it's impossible to further develop the Rocky Flat site, and thus is to our great advantage to recalculate that runoff because that will result in lesser channel improvements that are needed downstream because of the reduced runoff rate.
It does. And so, to be clear for folks that are wondering, this had, the original discharge rate was not in any way designed due to concerns about plutonium. It was truly about the amount of runoff from the site if it was fully developed as they projected in 1987. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Just kind of following on that same line, Great Western Reservoir was purchased by Department of Energy. Downing it somewhere in that area in a version built. Take anything came out of Great Western, so that site, bypassing anything that would connect in Sandy Lake or any of the water systems that serve Westminster, but would go east and south around anything that potentially come back and discharge anything that has been under their control since that time. Any other questions or comments on this item? Counsel, is that you have?
I have none.
Okay. All right, moving on, this is item 10H. Ms. Parker?
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. That item passes on a 7-0 vote. Moving on to item 10I. Counselor Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city's application for the 2021 Bloomberg Global Mayor's Challenge for a Green Home Makeover for Low-Income Households.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item 10I. Comments from counsel? Mayor Pro Tem, you have a comment?
I just wanted to say thank you for staff, to staff rather, for finding this grant opportunity that could bring close to $1 million to help us serve low-income residents in the city and help us combat climate change. Thank you.
Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question involving this is how does installing high-efficiency fixtures and landscaping that can reduce household water, how does that, how is that determined between rental and owner-occupied?
I think Public Works Director Kirschbaum is the lead on this. He had some other folks helping, but let me just start with that.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith, this is Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities. Could you repeat your question? I could only hear about half of it.
Yes. So the proposal is to install high-efficiency fixtures and landscaping in households. And so I'm wondering how that works with rentals versus owner-occupied because if it's a rental, it's much harder to install those types of fixtures.
The details are not worked out for this program yet, but essentially, this would be working with owners to make improvements to the property.
Okay. And we feel that we have enough need in our city that would make the $1 million worth going after.
Yes, I think, I think based on our experience with utility bill assistance, that we could make good use of this grant.
Okay. And then the FTE of one person, is that contractual? Is that, are we assuming an FTE after three years?
I don't know the detail to that. Perhaps Paul Schmeecken, if he is available, could answer that piece of the question?
Thank you, Director Kirschbaum. Counselor Smith, so the FTE would be paid for by the grant, and the FTE would be a limited term FTE, so for three years, which is basically the duration of that grant, assuming that we get it.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'd rather, I think this is a good, a good program for residents. I think helping in any regard that we can for low-income housing is important, but that FTE is kind of my hang-up right now because it's hard to, I'd rather see it as a contractual basis, and I'd rather see it as such and not as assuming an FTE because I know that after three years, whatever programmatic timeframe it is, it can be hard to let go of someone. So I will be voting no on this tonight.
Counsel Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting this tonight, and I do want to join Mayor Pro Tem Sights in thanking staff for locating this and bringing it forward to us, and I thank you for your work on this already. So I think it is a win-win. It helps low-income households, and it also will be environmental benefit. So I understand Counselor Smith's point on that. I still, though, I think I will be voting in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, and I'm looking here at the agenda, so I apologize if I missed it, but it specifically calls out low income. Is there any ability to use these funds for fixed-income folks that might not quote-unquote fit the low-income residents? I know that particularly around water rates, people who are fixed-incomes because they're retired, living that, you know, their life down in their dream home, we've heard that a lot, that they're impacted a lot by water. Curious if there's any ability to be able to use these dollars, particularly income-based.
Counsel, as Director Kirschbaum said, we do have some flexibility with this. I should just briefly explain that the due date for the proposal was March 21st. By early June, we will hear from the Bloomberg Foundation if we've been selected as one of 50, five-zero finalists. Between June and October, those 50 near-finalists, semifinalists have time to refine their proposal, and the final proposal is submitted in October. So Bloomberg will not be making a decision until December on which of the 15 finalists get the $1 million. So the answer is, if we are selected in June, we have, over the course of summer, to further refine this project.
Great, I appreciate the answer. So I guess I'll support this tonight, but I would heavily ask that we think about those folks that I've mentioned because I think that this could do great help for them. And I'd like to acknowledge Counselor Smith's concern. Maybe that's something that we can address as we go through this, but I'll support it for now, but I certainly would like us to address those two things.
I was going to suggest, Counselor Demott, to Counselor Smith's question, because we haven't really, we don't have the money, we haven't made a decision. I think we'd be open, looking at how to provide this employment. I don't know that it's necessarily 100% committed that this has to be a staff member yet. We've indicated as an FTE, but it's potentially possible to do that, do this under a contract, and we can reserve to, that would help to get you to a yes tonight to carry this forward. We could, we could look into that, keep that as an option.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Moving on, Ms. Parker, this is, sorry, Counselor Smith, do you have something else?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Tripp, thank you for clarifying that and that we could look into this further. If we're able to look at it on a contractual basis, I am comfortable moving my vote to a yes tonight.
Moving on to 10I, Ms. Parker?
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
And Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Item 10I passes on a 7-0 vote. Moving on to the next item, item 10J. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District doing business as Mile High Flood District to update a portion of the Big Dry Creek Outfall Systems Plan at a cost to the city of $45,000.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from counsel? Counselor Demott, you have a question? No comment? Okay. All right, just as a reminder to counsel, we have been very fortunate. In fact, we are in receipt right now of three grants from Urban Drainage. About two years ago, you may recall, I advised you that the Urban Drainage was going to the voters to de-bruce and degalerize our fund, which is part of the metro area group. Because we were successful in that election, the amount of money that we collect today and we bring back to the communities who are part of this group has grown by fourfold. We are taking on more projects at Urban Drainage than we've ever taken on in the history of that group. Westminster is a big recipient of multiple grants. This one, and I think there are at least two or three more that are in the process right now, and I think there's ever opportunity that we will probably get most, if not all of those, including some that we discussed in executive session of potential purchases. I think those stand high probability getting funding as well. So our continued involvement at the Urban Drainage Group has been very successful thus, and returned a lot of investment back to us, cleaning up roadways, cleaning up areas and pieces. But one I want to highlight is the park at 71st Irving, our new playground by the transit station. Because of the work that we did with Urban Drainage, we were able to reduce the size of that floodplain, redeveloped it as a regional park with the installation of playgrounds, water features, and everything going on. At the time we got that approved, we removed 100 homes from the floodplain by fixing that, put the investment in, lowering the cost of those homeowners of their flood insurance, reduced that greatly, both upstream and downstream of the park area. So our involvement here has been extremely successful, and I'm very grateful for the members of the organization who support our folks when we go forward. We just presented another one to them about two weeks ago. We were successful again in getting a recommendation for that grant, and that is not this one. It's another one that's still coming. So we appreciate their work, appreciate the work of the district and what they do for us. Ms. Parker? Moving on to item 10J, please.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
To counsel, that item is 10J, and it passes on a 7-0 vote. Mr. Tripp, we're going to move on to the next item on a discussion on the response to COVID and staff?
Yes, Public Works Utilities Director Max Kirschbaum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. If I could have the first slide, please? So we'll start with the slide that you are familiar with. This data is as of Friday, the 23rd. For the most part, the arrows indicate movement in the wrong direction still. Case numbers now over 200 for 100,000 per seven-day period in Adams, for example. We still show both Adams and Jefferson County in the blue status. That was by a set decision. So they will remain, both counties will remain in blue for the duration of what both public health offices are calling Phase 1 through May 15th. We did indicate in the new case and the percent positivity lines what those would be according to the previous dial. Looking at those updated information at the end of today, very little movement from Friday today, either in numbers or in percentages. So perhaps that's a positive that it, we may be witnessing a little bit of leveling here. And I say that because also, as you look at the number currently hospitalized, while that number has continued to climb, the rate of that climb has also began, begun to level off a little bit. Looking at the number for today, it's down to 621. And if you'll go to the next slide, you'll begin to see that a little bit in the curve. You can, you can begin to see what looks like it could be a leveling off, but we've been in this plus 600 range for several days now without significant change. So hopefully, that also is a positive. At this time, I would like to show, if we can go to the next slide, that there have now been a total of vaccinations of over 4 million doses administered, and you see that on the cumulative stack bar chart on the far right, just going over that 4 million mark. And of that 4 million, as of today, 1.7 million people are now fully vaccinated. 1.7 out of 5.7 million, still a long way to go, but at least we, there is progress or there is movement, and it's a good thing that a total of 4 million doses have now been administered. If I could go to the next slide, I'm going to show for the first time a slide that, this is really just for introduction purpose because, as I mentioned, the local public health offices are in what they are calling Phase 1 of the current order, which both have issued. That phase expires on May 15th, and then we will enter Phase 2 of their order. At Phase 2, both counties will transfer from Level Blue to a new level called Clear. As I mentioned last week, there is only one metric in Phase 2. They will no longer be looking at the case count as a metric, they'll be looking at this hospitalization rate. And what this represents is the number- what this represents is the number of hospital admissions per 100,000 people on a 14-day rolling average. And that, and the top end of that metric is shown here with the dark red line at 2. 2 sounds like a small number, but when you look at it on a, a continuous daily basis and per 100,000 people, you can see this charts the activity of that metric going all the way back to the beginning of the pandemic. And except for the early spike and that spike that occurred late in 2020, both, this, I'm sorry, this is Adams County. I'm just using this as representative. It has remained below that 2 per 100,000 over that 14-day range. So, you'll, we'll begin to show this more in the coming weeks as we move toward May 15th, and we'll, we'll start to show for both counties. But I, I think this would indicate that it, it is clearly possible, maybe I shouldn't use the word clear, it is certainly possible to remain below that 2.0 number, such that the counties could remain in a clear status. And that, what that clear status means is, other than any mask mandate that may be in effect, either by state or either county, there are no restrictions in Level Clear. So, it's a very important metric. Just looking at the data, it would appear that it is possible to remain below that red line. So, this was just for demonstration purpose today, although it is correct data, and it is through April 24th. As we go forward, we'll show this more to kind of give a preview of what things might be or will be once we get to May 16. And that's all I have for you this evening, unless you have any questions.
Thanks, Max. Just one piece in where Max was talking about the hospitalization, again, that's two county residents per day are rolling 14-day average. Most of the hospitalization that we're seeing, as I reported out earlier this morning, are in age groups 18 to 40. As our younger groups, we're seeing as more and more people in the older groups have gotten vaccinated, we've seen less and less of them being hospitalized. Doesn't necessarily mean that they didn't get sick, but they haven't been sick enough to go to the hospital. So, this has been very encouraging. We're hoping to be able to move that clear, but it's also, as Max said, intent right now, especially with the two health directors is, and along with the state, is the mask order will continue even if we go into Level Clear for some period of time. That period of time has not been identified, how long it will. Counselor Demott, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Max, for the presentation. I'd say that the idea of us looking at hospitalization is probably the happiest newspaper in 14 months. That's a weird thing to say, because nobody wants to go to the hospital, but there could be some movement is good. But on that, I had a couple quick questions. So, as we go through these new dials, are we going to be able to see a chart that is reflective of the new dials versus the old one? Because I think that could be confusing for both. We've been seeing this every, every week, so I think we all kind of follow, but I'm just curious, are we kind of just waiting for those new rules to levelize or standardize what we're showing every week?
As I read the public health orders, they, neither Tri-County Health or Jefferson County are using the dot per se as it was. They are both using the restrictions that go along with the previous color codes, but there isn't a dial any longer per se. I'm just kind of following along with those restrictions. That's why on the, the first slide, I am still showing some of that color coding, because it's, it's familiar and it's a little bit helpful, but it really isn't a dial anymore. Both counties will stay in Level Blue for the duration of that Phase 1.
Okay. And then my other question, this is, I think we brought this up before in the past, I'm just curious what the trends are. You know, he's been following this very closely. As far as like hospitalization, are we, I had heard a while back that the trend of COVID hospitalization, that we're getting better, all the people go in, they're not staying. We're able to, and there are
Yes, that's still true in my conversations with the CEOs. Even though someone may come into the emergency room or something, a lot of them can be treated in the emergency room without an actual hospital admission. Those that are being admitted are staying in a much shorter time than they were, let's say, this time last year, when the severity of that was because no one was vaccinated. Keep in mind, even though you get vaccinated, it doesn't mean you can't still get infected or pass that infection, but typically, what it's doing is reducing the severity of the infection, especially in our older populations. Our, our big numbers from the hospitals that I've discussed it with is still in that 18 to 40 group. That's because they're the groups that have the least numbers of people vaccinated.
Sure, no, that makes sense. Well, I appreciate you guys pointing this out again. I think this is great news. It's been a long, 13, 15 months, so it's been good news. So, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on the COVID report? All right, let's move on to the next item. This is category 11 under Old Business, passed. The first item is item A1. This is Council Bill Number 8, asking that this be removed from, from the table. Counselor Demott?
I move to remove the, from the table, Council Bill Number 8, amending sections 8-7-24 and 8-7-25 and 8-12-16 of the Westminster Municipal Code relating to water, water shortage or drought and wastewater.
Counselor Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second to remove item, Council Bill Number 8, from the table. Questions from counsel? Ms. Parker?
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counsel, Council Bill Number 8 is now removed from the table. This goes to item A2. Demott?
I apologize. Did I skip you? I, I am so sorry. One more time for the roll call. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Apologies. Thank you.
Okay, we still have a 7-0, even though we couldn't hear the first. Moving on to item A2. Counselor Demott?
Move to pass. I know, I was just figuring it would be as 2, because that's what I'm going to read, so that's fine. I move to pass Council Bill Number 8, Version 2, on first reading, amending sections 8-7-24, 8-7-25, and 8-12-16 of the Westminster Municipal Code relating to water shortage or drought and waste of water. Let me clarify. Did you say version 1 or version 2?
Version 2. Reading that before version 1?
I thought it was one of the three.
It was a pick-your-adventure.
It needs to go to version 1, correct?
Actually, I believe, Mr. Mayor, the way that it was written, these were or votes. And so, there, there is no requirement to vote on each one. If council agrees to vote on version 2, if there's a second, and everyone agrees to move on with it, then we could just adopt based on that vote.
Well, if you take one, you can ignore the other two, is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Okay. I'll make sure. So, we're looking at version 2, Council Bill Number 8.
Correct.
Everybody okay? All right. And Ms. Scully, I think I had a second from you on that one already?
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second from Council's Bill Number 8, Version 2. Any comments or questions from counsel? Counselor Demott, your.
Yep, purposely, thank you. So, I was reading back on the, when we voted on this drought management plan, I believe it was back in 2019. Initially, we had some changes on that, that I voted no on the drought management plan. And so, I just wanted to be consistent with, at least sharing the fact that the reason I voted no back then was, when we made that change, it took the authority away from council and gave it to the City Manager. I was not in the majority on that, so that went through. So, I am going to be supporting this tonight, because I do think the things that are changed in this, thanks to staff as well as my colleagues' work on making it the best it could be with these changes, I think it improves it. So, I will be supporting it tonight.
Protem?
I wanted to say thank you to both my colleagues and to staff for really listening to the goals of each other, understanding that we were just trying to look at something that was really clear and held us accountable, as well as asking our residents to be accountable if we were in a drought. And I think staff gave us multiple options tonight that would have worked, and I'm more than happy to support the option that Counselor Demott voted, or motioned. And I would say, I do find it really helpful when my colleagues do what Counselor Demott just did, and kind of describe their reasoning for making votes and for changing their minds, or for approving something that they see as a nuanced difference. So, I think it's really helpful for the dialogue. So, thank you.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I too want to thank my fellow counselors for this. I think moving this to give a timeline, Counselor Smith did a great job in voicing that concern and brought that up. And then reading this, the version 2, staff did a nice job of balancing time for the resident, and then also giving, you know, time for delay for those reasons also. So, I'll, I'll be supporting this also. And overall, the bill also, the understanding of a partnership, of having counsel as part of this is important. And then my, my concern was, we moved some of the items from Shell. That gives room for consideration for everyone involved in this too. So, I appreciate everyone's corroboration on this.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to thank staff and thank you for tabling this, so we could have a deeper discussion, because I think it lent to a broader perspective for all of us and for our residents. And to Counselor Bowles's point, as far as understanding where I was trying to go with it, but then also making a good point as far as it could be an accountability on the resident's side too. So, that was also important to bring to light, that I didn't really focus on either. So, I think it was a healthy discussion that we've all had in regards to this. And I do appreciate version 2. I think it balances both what you were trying to get at and what I was trying to get at, and I think that that helps keep everyone accountable. So, I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to allow us to have that dialogue. It's important to do so. And I know that in this, because I went back and actually read the, what we have in our code and what that looks like as far as the wording on it without the red line, because it's easier to read. But this is only a clarification. This wasn't an addition to, it's clarifying their verbiage in this. And so, I know that there was some concern about the $1,000, and it does look like it could be cumbersome, and it, it is. But as far as I understand, and what I asked in our study session last week, was that it may not be the first level offense as far as a fine. So, that was also good to hear. So, I will be supporting version 2 tonight, and I just wanted to thank you all again.
Counselor Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to just say the same thing, I guess. I want to thank Counselor Smith for originally bringing that issue forward. It's an important issue, and I think we all agreed with it. And then staff and colleagues discussing it, this is a nice process. So, I want to thank staff and Counselor Smith and all my colleagues. I, I'm going to be supporting version 2 tonight. So, thank you.
Any other comments from counsel? Not this is a roll call vote for Council Bill Number 8, Version 2. Ms. Parker?
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
And Counselor Demott?
Yes. Counsel passes Council Bill Number 8, Version 2, on a 7-0 vote. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, this is Max Kirschbaum. If you, if I could just, for just one second, I would like to say a thank you to Mr. Matt Munt, Mr. Matt Munch in City Attorney's Office, who's been very flexible in working with Public Works and Utilities on, on this change. Greatly appreciated. Thank you, Matt.
Sorry, Max, I couldn't figure out who was calling. I kept looking at the audience.
I apologize. I just, I just wanted to say a thank you.
Counselor Demott, do you have something else? Okay, moving on. That concludes the business of the Westminster City Council for tonight. We are currently adjourned as the City Council. We are now going to move over to the Westminster Economic Development Board of Directors. We will maintain the same roll call that we previously had, and at this point, I will look for a motion from the board to approve the minutes of the April 28, April 12 meeting. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the minutes of April 12, 2021 meeting as presented.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second from the board to approve the minutes of the April 12 meeting of 2021. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Or none? Motion is carried. Moving on to the one piece of business we have tonight, item 3A, Resolution Number 215. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 215, authorizing the Westminster Economic Development Authority Executive Director to execute the amended and restated for sale development agreement in substantially the same form as presented with Downtown Westminster Resident Denses LLC for Block A4 West, Block A4 East, Block C7, and a portion of Lot 2, Block A1 in Downtown Westminster.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution Number 215. Is there any comments or questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention, this is another one that I was critical of before, and I know that, that it's really the economic conditions in COVID that made this change. However, I do actually much prefer this new deal to what we had before. So, I'm actually pretty hopeful about it, and happy to support it tonight.
Any other comments? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I too had voted against this originally. It didn't make sense to me moving that forward as presented, but this present, presentation to council seemed like a reasonable approach to the project, and I will be supporting it tonight.
Any other comments or questions from any member of the board? Ms. Parker?
Chairperson Atchison?
Yes.
Board Member Demott?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sights?
Yes.
Board Member Seymour?
Yes.
Board Member Scully?
Yes.
Board Member Smith?
Yes.
And Board Member Bowles?
Yes.
Thank you, board. We are done for the evening with the Westminster Economic Development Authority. Ladies and gentlemen, what we have remaining tonight is a presentation from our contract lobbyist. After that, we will adjourn and re-adjourn in an executive session at the conclusion of the legislative update. Mr. Tripp, I will turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff, Chris Lindsay and others, please go ahead and jump on the meeting this evening and take us through this mid-session update. I see Amy Atwood coming on. Hello, Amy and Becky. Thanks for all you do for us. We really appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. You see before you the legislative team, and I'm going to turn it over to Teresa Boco, our, our staff lead on legislation, to take you through tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Again, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. Thank you for your time this evening. We are here for the 2021 mid-session legislative update, and we are so fortunate to have Amy Atwood of Atwood Public Affairs and Becky Long of Segal Public Affairs as our contract lobbyists down at the state legislature. They are here to provide you with a presentation this evening. We would ask the, to hold questions until the end, if, if that is possible, and then we will be happy to answer any and all questions that you all have. So, I will turn it over to Amy and Becky for their presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Amy Atwood, contract lobbyist, city of Westminster.
Amy Atwood, contract lobbyist, city of Westminster. Becky Long and I work together, we partner together to represent the city. We have two separate firms, and we have been with the city for three, four years now. It's been wonderful, and we really appreciate and value all that you do and the communication with staff and with counsel. And we just can't say enough at how quickly things turn around when we have questions and how available council members are. So thank you so much. Becky?
Yeah, I just would echo Amy's thanks and her words. We appreciate working with the city and are always excited to get to see you sort of in person, at least in real time, when we get to come meet with you all. So we're glad to see you once again. Enjoy continuing to work with you, and certainly the legislative session is not quite normal these days either, so we're excited to share some of what's going on and hopefully answer any questions you have.
Okay, we'll jump in. We are over halfway through the session. If you remember, we took a pause for about a month, mid-January to mid-February. So at this point, we would be looking at maybe two weeks left in session, and Becky will go into it a little bit later, what we foresee coming. It's been busy so far, and we hope that the weekly updates that you get on Monday have helped to keep you informed with the bills, and we're always available to answer questions. And it's also given you a flavor, we hope, of the political dynamics and the big boulders, the things that are moving within the legislature. We'll start with human resources and labor and employment. We've seen a number of bills in this category this year, as we usually do. We've seen a number of workman's comp bills. Workforce development has been at the top of the list as well with stimulus dollars as well as state dollars. There is a big anti-discrimination bill that is working its way through right now. It's called the Power Act, and Senator Winter is sponsoring that one. And then we foresee a collective bargaining bill that will be introduced here shortly. When we look at public safety, it's been busy, but it has a different feel and tenor than it did last year. There is a bill currently about the use of chemical restraints, as well as there is a cleanup bill for 217. If you remember, that was the law enforcement accountability bill from last year that ran right at the end. And how quickly it ran, we knew that there would be cleanup to that. We've seen school discipline and a couple gun safety bills that you probably have seen quite a bit of press on. And then we've also had the budget. This year, we have three different budget tracks, it seems. We have the long bill, that is the usual state budget, and that passed two weeks ago in the House. They have not gone to conference committee yet. There were a number of amendments put on the Senate and number in the House, and it's unusual that they haven't gone to conference committee. But that is because, well, they have to go to conference committee before they can totally finalize and repass the bill and it be done. And because there is also the state stimulus dollars that are coming in, and that's about $800 million, that has changed what maybe could be shifted out of the long bill, because it's one-time dollars into state stimulus dollars, if it falls under what the Joint Budget Committee and the legislature wants. But that's why it's taken a little while for the Joint Budget Committee to determine what's going to be in the long bill and what is in the state stimulus. There are a number of bills, and in your weekly report this week, there was a link to the list of all the state stimulus bills that are out there. And then the third track is, so we have the regular budget, we have the state stimulus, and those are all being run as bills for the state stimulus. It's not being wrapped into the long bill. So you have the state stimulus bills, and then we have the federal stimulus dollars that are coming in. And Becky, do you want to talk about the federal stimulus dollars?
Yeah, I'll jump in here and say, we know there will be some significant federal stimulus dollars that pass through to Colorado based on what was already passed in recent weeks at the federal. We also anticipate that there will be additional federal dollars potentially around transportation and infrastructure packages, which are working their way through the process tonight. Certainly heard a little bit about some of that action from Congressman Pearl Mudd's office earlier, and there will be a lot more news to come. I think the big question mark we have here in Colorado is when and how are they going to allocate those dollars? And so as Amy noted, we're a little over halfway through the 120-day calendar the legislature has. I think tomorrow is legislative day 74 or 5, not that I would count at all. And so we're still waiting to see how the final weeks of session play out and when those dollars come in. Due to the Supreme Court decision last year, the legislature can pause and start the legislative session as long as they don't exceed that 120-day total. As Amy mentioned, they've already paused and restarted once. And now the big question is, when will they finish session? So they've got about 50 days left on the calendar. Will they go for another 50 days, or will they go for maybe another 30, which is what we're done hearing, that they may try to wrap up around Memorial Day? And then they will either adjourn C D E and be done with the regular session, or they could pause and come back. There's conversations about whether or not there could be a special session later this fall, and I think we generally expect that they'll either pause and come back, or they'll adjourn and have a special session. Hopefully, they won't do both, though I'm not sure that's been ruled out yet either. So there's a lot of conversation happening in the building right now about how many days left in session do we actually have, and what does that look like? Generally, everyone's trying to get their bills done by about Memorial Day, and we do expect there will be some additional type of action later this summer or fall around stimulus dollars, since those dollars just aren't in our budget yet. So those are for federal stimulus dollars. State stimulus should be allocated before the end of May through the bills that are moving in. As Amy mentioned, there's this spreadsheet that links all of those in your report this week. I'll continue on to one of the other big ticket items that everyone is still waiting with bated breath to see more about, which is the transportation funding proposal. There are some stimulus dollars that will be allocated to that, but there's also some ongoing long-term dollars that we're hearing about. And I'm sure that many of you have been hearing briefings in various rooms you sit in about this transportation funding proposal for a number of weeks. And so I don't know that I have anything particularly new to add, except in speaking to Senator Winter, one of the prime sponsors tonight. She did tell me that we should anticipate seeing bill language, which we have not seen yet, by midweek this week. So it sounds like it'll be a very significant bill. It is very long. It will be 100 to 200 pages. We should get that later this week, and it will likely be introduced next week in the legislature. The original proposal that was rolled out in mid-March was for about $3.5 billion. It does sound like that proposal has been increased to somewhere between $4 and $5 billion. I think there's still a lot of question about how much of that funding is upfront through one-time dollars versus ongoing dollars over the next 10 years, as many other parts of the proposal lay out. We do anticipate that there will be an increase in multimodal dollars and in the local share of those dollars in particular, beyond what we saw in early March, though we don't have exact dollar figures for what we're going to see there, though last figures, we had heard were around $250 million in multimodal option funds. So we'll know a little more about that here in coming weeks, or in the coming week, and we'll keep you all updated as it happens. I don't know if the light flicking is our sign to wrap up, I'm guessing, so that we're right on time. That's the last item I had in my update. I think that's our signal.
Becky, it had nothing to do with you. It's somebody trying to tell us. Been here a long time.
Becky, do you want to give a brief update on environmental bills?
Sure. I'll just highlight a couple items that are moving this year in the environmental space. We have a couple recycling bills, House Bill 1162, which deals with some individual plastic products like styrofoam. It originally had legislation to remove the preemption for local governments in that bill. That was removed as it moved through the House Finance Committee. Colorado Municipal League is still working to try to get that reintroduced. I'm not sure that it's likely to happen at this point, but it'll be watched closely. And then Senate Bill 180, which was brought really by the American Chemical Council and some of the plastic manufacturers, and would have set up an enterprise fund and a program on those recyclables that could be moved. There were some concerns that that program was being prompted prematurely before this finishes, a pretty important report, to guide what that program might look like here in Colorado, what might be, what material options there are. And so last week, at like the 11th hour before the Finance Committee hearing, there was a deal struck to move that to a study and do some further review. So that bill is now being through the process as well. I think both bills are likely to pass in their amended forms, but neither one has left their original chamber of introduction. And there's a handful of bills around the built environment and how we heat homes, in particular in buildings. A commercial building benchmarking bill has been introduced in the House along with the bill around gas demand management systems, which is being on our current program that an investor-owned utilities have. And then finally, a bill around beneficial electrications, rounds that back through. But one of the key bills that a lot of folks have been paying attention to is Senate Bill 200, which works to codify the roadmap that Governor Polis released late last year and some efforts that have been undertaken at the Air Quality Commission to firm up the goals and targets in that roadmap. There's been a lot of debate about whether or not that bill institutes a hard cap on emissions, or if it just codifies a target. Senator Winter and others would argue it's codifying a target versus setting a hard cap. There will be a lot more conversation on that bill to come when it moves through the process, probably later this week, and through the Senate, should it continue to move.
And that really wraps up our report. We know that it was quick. Do you have any questions for us?
Welcome back to council. You have anything else want to add to the report?
I was just going to add at the end, if there's ever anything comes up and you all would like it included in the weekly report, if you let us know just a couple days into the week, we can always work to add custom information to those reports if there's something you're looking for more of an update on.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, you had a comment or a question?
Yeah, and I'm just going to apologize, Amy or Becky, if either of you covered this already. I had my COVID vaccine today, and I thought I was going to be fine, and I'm starting to, I'm starting to not. I was wondering, there had been the bill on affordable housing that would weigh this exception for inclusionary zoning, and I cannot remember the number right now. I had heard there was some talk about amendments that maybe the governor had wanted, and I just was wondering what was going on with that one, if you could give us an update on that specific bill?
Sure. That's House Bill 1117. And as a council, you've taken a support position on that, and we've been working it all the way through the process. There is an amendment. It's coming from the governor's office, and the governor had said without this amendment, he was going to veto the bill. He was very strong and strident about that. And so negotiations have gone back and forth with the governor's office and CML. We've seen the language that will be in the amendment. The amendment hasn't been drafted yet, and it's a good compromise. It is not, the bill isn't as easy as it once was, but it still moves in the right direction, and we will have a body of evidence after two or three years that if what has been put in the bill, if those steps are working or not, if there are hindrance or not. And so once we have that amendment, we can share that with you as well. It should come out in the morning.
If it comes out, that would be helpful. And briefly describe, if you've seen the language, like what areas it wants to amend? I guess I was kind of surprised to hear that it would have elicited a veto if not amended. So I'm trying to understand what was problematic.
Yep, let me pull it up.
I'm sorry.
And, okay, so it is, it starts with that a local government, it says no local government may exercise the authority granted by this subsection. So it's saying if you want to do inclusionary zoning, you have to do these things. So unless a local government currently demonstrates its commitment to increase the overall number of density of housing, density and number, sorry, overall number and density of housing units, and the currently was very important to the governor. And so then later on, it notes three or four things that adopted policies that you would have, you would have to adopt a policy that explicitly shows that you are trying to increase density within the city. And, let's see, design, they really want to increase the supply of housing, and so they want the local government to have policies around that, so of increasing density as well as increasing affordable housing. So before a city could go for inclusionary zoning, they would have to have that kind of policy in place.
And you're telling me, you're telling me CML is okay with that?
Yeah, CML actually negotiated, it's softer and more open language of what would be, what would show as in your policies. The new policy, you may not even have to adopt a new policy for Westminster because you are so affordable housing friendly, but it is for those local governments that are not as friendly.
I have concerns, but I will address them at a different time. Thank you so much.
And we'll send you the amendment. And so feedback, we'll send it through Teresa tomorrow and feedback that comes back. If you had heard that the governor had their language midweek last week, this language has come, speaking with CML this morning with Megan, this language has come 100 yards from where that was last Wednesday, Thursday. So she was feeling better about, definitely better about it today in that it didn't gut the bill, like the original language from the governor looked like.
All right, thanks, Amy.
Because this was one of the list of things, I believe, that was wanted before with cities would have to be willing to rebate TAP fees in favor of affordable housing, and that would be a real problem for Westminster. It's not something that we have done. We've always held to the integrity of our TAP fees, and so I guess I would like to be sure that's not one of the listed requirements.
It is not.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Amy or Becky? Teresa, when you get back?
We will send that along as soon as we have it, Mayor and council. If there's no other questions, thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward to keeping you updated on Mondays with the weekly report and any other matters that come up during the legislative session. Thank you.
Ms. Decker, are you with us?
I am, Mr. Mayor. Council members, hello, everyone.
We had a request for an executive session, if you would please.
We do. We have a proposed executive session discussion of a personnel matter, a discussion of next steps following the presiding municipal judge candidate interviews pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code Section 111, 3C1, and Colorado Revised Action Section 246, 402, 4F.
Counsel, as you have seen, we've had a request to continue the discussions and follow-up on the interviews that we were spending our day on Saturday. The request is going to executive session. I will poll the council to see if everyone is prepared for that, and then we will take a short break. Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Scully?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem? And we will take a short break. We will go till 9:55, that is about 11 minutes, give everybody a chance to stretch, get some freshness, then we will reconvene in the reconvene in the executive session. You will go to your calendars to get up the point and the sign in for that. And then we will be back in session at 9:55. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.